Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome to tonight's council council meeting. Day's date is Monday, January 27th, 2020. Time is 6:00 PM. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Next is the invocation, but before I do, I'd just like to, if we could, council, just take a moment of silence for related matters in the media. I'm sure someone's had a family or friend that's had death in the family, could be a loved one or anyone. So I would like to take a moment of silence if we could do the invocation, if that's okay. Thank you. Now down to...
Please bless this council and administration. Help us, help guide us to make the right decisions that taxpayers and citizens of Fairfield County deserve and expect. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Douglas. Now, the approval of the amendments dated January 13th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved improperly. Second, all those in...any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. There are no public presentations. Now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone signed to speak?
We have two speakers. First, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on thoughts. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the library.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. I'm not sure if this investment has been well thought out to put into the library. And I'm not sure we've done the best we can to ensure that it is. Let me convey this to you. A library that's only open 16 hours a week presently, from what I've seen and what I've heard of the numbers, doesn't deserve any investment. But nevertheless, Ridgeway and its citizens deserve a fair chance to see if this library is worth the investment. My suggestion is to take 90 days, open it up to 44 hours a week, put a little investment in it, and let's see, number one, will the community embrace it? Number two, when the community visits this library, if they do, which they aren't now really, if they do, then let's survey them, what services would they like to receive? And then we can take this data and make an intelligent decision, what does Ridgeway deserve in the form of a library? Additionally, during this time, and actually previously, I'd like to see us fix the website of the Ridgeway Library. Presently, it has a picture of the old library. Presently, it has the address and hours of the old library. Anybody that Googles Ridgeway South Carolina Library might wind up with different hours, opening hours than they are open. This may be discouraging people. So we need to right the ship on the library, give this library a chance, make the small investment before we make a decision, and then we can make a quantitative decision, what do we need in Ridgeway as a library? And another option that might be, if we find out that, you know, obviously 16 hours a week is not an investment in a purchase of a new building, why not see if we can't work with the school district and then expand Giger's library hours? We already got the building, already got the facility, already got the people. We need to think these solutions through before we commit to a library that so far the community hasn't embraced, but so far the community hasn't had a chance to embrace. So let's give Ridgeway a chance, let's give the library a chance with a small investment, and then we'll know for sure we've made the right decision before we jump in with an investment that's either too little, too late, or not enough. But right now, we have nothing quantitative to tell us what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment one.
Thank you. Now down to our public hearings. Tonight, we have three. Item A is ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina and Victory Boats LLC to provide certain incentives, authorizing the acquisition of certain real property in the county and other related matters. We'll open this public hearing up at 6:05. Ms. Davis, do we have anyone to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
This is, just speaks in general to a couple of these items on this. I just want to thank council as a complete body and the economic development team, administrative teams, for the excellent progress in this county towards the economic development line. I mean, it's just was recently reflected. Last month, we set a historic low for unemployment, or the month before last, and then we just beat that this month. So well done with the progress, keep it up. And something that I spoke to before, a lot of this is because you're thinking through things before you move ahead. And that, I, that's been reflective, and I've praised that before. And again, that was my message in this, in the last speech, and I thank you for what you've done previously in thinking through things, and let's think through things all the way through in the future, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else signed to speak?
All right. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:06. Now down to item B, an ordinance authorizing amendments to a lease agreement providing for a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County and other related matters. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing up at 6:07. Ms. Davis, anyone signed to speak?
One speaker, Ms. Shirley Green.
Shirley Green, District Two. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
In taking a look at Mount Zion and how it's been handled by Fairfield County Council, I think that the public simply deserves more. We are taking a look at increasing the amount of money for Mount Zion, but we really have not gotten a complete picture. In the beginning, we were given an appendix, a cash flow outline. That outline was very clear and understandable. It really was giving us the exact amount that was expected in terms of rent, of lease. Now we've changed the terminology. We said rent at first, now we're talking lease. But it gave us the lease amount per month. It also added into this cash flow analysis the 2.5% that was originally in the contract and most often in any contract for a lease nowadays, that it goes up about 2.5% per year. That was in a cash flow analysis. We also had a cash flow analysis when you started out with the amount that you were spending for Mount Zion compared to a new build. So I think that council needs to take a very close look at a clash, cash flow analysis and make sure that the public understands what you're proposing here. I don't think that it's clear. I don't think that it's concise. I don't think that it's transparent. And I think that county council needs to take a second look at a cash flow analysis and what it means for taxpayers of Fairfield County.
Thank you. No one else signed to speak?
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:09. Now down to item C, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, inclusive residential district of approximately one acre owned by Lucius and Sheila Sampson applicant, tax map number 145-02-12-033-000. This property is located at 322 Hillcrest Road, Winsboro, South Carolina. We'll open this public hearing up at 6:10. Ms. Davis, anyone signed to speak?
No one signed to speak.
All right. We'll go ahead and close that public hearing, also at 6:10 as well. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Ms. Davis, would please. Item A.
Third and final reading, ordinance number 733, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Victory Boats LLC to provide certain incentives, authorizing the acquisition of certain real property in the county and other related matters.
It's been moved improperly. Second, is there any discussion from council? Mr. Taylor, or just give a brief description for the public, please, sir?
Yes, as... With most, most economic development projects, as is the case with this one, when we have someone come in, typically, we have to offer them certain incentives in order to lure the company. We're always competing against other countries, other counties, other states, those kind of things. And to make it more attractive to locate here, we work very closely with the Department of Commerce. And on this particular deal, we've gotten grant money from Commerce, and we have had to put in certain tax abatements or tax incentives to get them to locate here. And that's what is included in what's being presented. Mr. Davenport, would you like to add anything to that?
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from council? If not, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Now down to item B, third and final reading, ordinance number 739. Ms. Davis, if you would, please.
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, inclusive residential district of approximately one acre owned by Lucius and Sheila Sampson applicant, tax map number 145-02-12-033-000. Property is located at 322 Hillcrest Road, Winsboro, South Carolina.
Is there a motion?
No move.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion from council? Once again, I think Mr. Clausen's there. Just give a brief description.
I'll defer Mr. Clausen on this one to give council an explanation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Yes, so this is a property just outside of the town of Winsboro. It was in the comprehensive plan to be one of these residential districts. That was the gist of what they said. So there were three different zoning districts that could be allowed in there. R1, R2, and B1 were the, were the primary ones. They opted for the most exclusive, which is R1, which would not allow a residential design mobile home. The applicant wants to place a residential design mobile home there. So this, this rezoning is, it's in keeping with the comprehensive plan. It went through the planning commission. They recommended to council it be approved, and that's the gist of it. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Clausen. Any further questions from council, comments? If not, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, sir. Now down to item C, third and final reading, ordinance number 740. Ms. Davis, if you would, please.
An ordinance authorizing amendments to a lease agreement providing for a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County and other related matters.
No move.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion from council? If not, Mr. Taylor, just brief description, please, for public purposes.
I will defer to Mr. Tommy Morgan, our attorney, on this one. The company has made certain changes to the lease based on their lender that has required them. Mr. Morgan, if you could go over those changes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, what we have for you this evening is the, the ordinance that would provide for the county to enter into an amended lease agreement with the MZI Holdings LLC, and it is in direct relation to the new administration building. There are a few changes that are made to the lease. First and foremost, it increases the amount of, of the buildings, includes the teach ridge portion, which is a small building on the backside of the main campus. That is also now included as part of the lease terms. It changes the base lease rent because of the fact that it's gone from 45,000 roughly square feet to a little over 51,000 square feet. The amount of the lease terms has been increased. And then what it does, too, is it provides for some particular terms as it relates to the financing. As Mr. Taylor has pointed out, that there are some new market tax credits that the developer is going to apply for and will likely, and actually in all actuality, has been kind of indicated that they would receive, but they had to change some of the terminology and some of the language in there as relates to potential renewal lease terms. So these are some changes that were put into place that don't have any direct effect on any of the outlay of the capital, on behalf of the county, any further increases in cost. It's just something that would allow for the banks and the, and the financial institutions to get more, I guess, comfort as it relates to the financing of the underlying developer.
Mr. Bell?
The total cost of the project, will that remain the same?
When you say the total cost of the project...
The estimated cost, I guess, the price that it can't go up no more than.
Correct. That, that amount is still, that remains the same base amount. And with regards to this amended lease, the only change as it relates to the potential cost would be an increased lease term, the amount that the annual lease would be as it relates to because of the additional space that is going to be provided to the county.
Okay. And also with the extra tax credits, will we get some of that money in that we don't have to pay as much for the, for the lease and the total price of it to seven years?
What ends up happening is the tax credits that the developers applying for is a mechanism by which it is allowing them to keep that price down. So there is not a direct conveyance or transfer of cost to the county. But what is happening is those new market tax credits are allowing for the developer to keep that project at a lower cost, therefore providing the cost savings to the county in that particular manner.
Any further questions from council? If not, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Is that three nays? Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. It's four. All those in favor, read it right hand. All those against? Four, three. Thank you. Now down to board and commission minutes. Each one should have received it as information for library commission and chamber of commerce. Onto board and commission appointments. We have one appointment of Central Midlands Council of Government, Mr. Kyle Krager. Do I have a motion? It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion?
I'm in, I'm in favor of the nomination. But, Mr. Taylor, you want to talk about what this person does?
Kyle Krager is an engineer.
No, I'm not. What will he be doing on this board?
He will be representing Fairfield County on the COG Board, the Council of Government. The Council of Government is a clearinghouse-type agency that assists counties. They're regionally located, and they typically have several counties assigned for them to represent, and they represent them in the way of trying to get monies for transportation, for roadways and things such as that, for water and sewer, for councils on aging, all those kind of human services also. It's a very important agency that serves the counties and advises the counties, again, on how to improve themselves from a planning perspective or receiving monies.
Just keep in mind, I think that position's been vacant for a year. So, any further discussion from council? All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Is Mr. Krager here? Just making sure to acknowledge him. There is no old business, no new business. Now down to our county administrators' report. You, you want to defer to Ms. Johnson?
I'll start it off, and I'll kick it off to Ms. Johnson and to Mr. Robinson, also, if he would like to come up and speak, or Mr. Dove, whomever would like to represent the library. We do have a situation where we had a little while back entered into an arrangement to lease a building for the library in Ridgeway. We are now coming to the end of that lease, and we have to make a decision on whether we move forward and purchase the building or just continue to lease. We could continue to lease, but the issue is, we will pass a deadline, which we have a locked-in purchase price. And if we pass that deadline, we lose that locked-in purchase price. So we could be facing a much higher price to buy the building. So we have to make a decision whether we want to go ahead and execute our option to purchase or, or not. The library, they have met, and they're willing to, I think, fund half of that purchase, which is, let's see, half of the 169,000. I will refer to, to Ms. Johnson on this to get into the details of the cost. Ms. Johnson, if you would like to...
Well, we don't have a full cost yet. In the, in the agreement, it's 169,900, but the library has also agreed to go in and pay half of any closing fees. So we don't know what the closing fees or anything like that is. And also, we would need to have an answer. So we have 90 days to send a letter basically saying, yes, I intend to purchase.
Let me stop for a minute. I didn't get a motion on this. So, do I have a motion? It's been moved. Can I get a second on that? It's been moved improperly. Second, now, discussion. I apologize. It is an action item, so.
Mr. Robinson, would you like to add to that also? Give a brief description of the project?
I don't have that with me. We've been discussing Ridgeway for quite a while now as a library board and what to do in Ridgeway specifically because we've moved six times in Ridgeway over the years that we've been there. And every time we move, we're moving from one place that we rent or lease to another. And the library board would like to actually have a permanent location in Ridgeway, if at all possible. This has kind of fallen into our lap that it's a pretty, pretty sweet deal for us in that we finally have a piece of property that's available for us to purchase. The only problem is, like was said, is that we, we have 90 days after, or we have until the end of March to respond to the fact of the price that's written within the lease. If we go beyond that, then we either have to, well, if we want to re-up the lease, we have until the end of March to re-up the lease. We also have until then to accept this purchase price, if at all possible. The library board met Tuesday night, agreed to put in half the, the purchase price of this just so that we can finally have a permanent location in Ridgeway. Now, is it the ideal location? I'm not sure. That's up for debate for anyone. But we are happy with what the county did for us in making this location an ideal spot for a branch library. The branch manager that's there is very happy with where she is. The only issue that we seem to have is that people don't realize that that's our branch library that's there. That may have done, it, it may be one of the reasons that some of our numbers are down. People don't see the awning that says Fairfield County Library, Ridgeway Branch on it. It's the only place that it's written. But we've been there now for a year. Our numbers are not ideal, but they're in line with how they've always been in Ridgeway. Does anybody have any questions for me or my board chair?
How much is it used?
I have some numbers here for you. We do what's called a gate count. We, we count every person that comes in the library, both at the Ridgeway Branch and at the main branch. We average 168.9 people per month, 42.2 per week, and 10.6 per day. So does that answer, help answer your question? I also have some circulation numbers.
How many hours is it open?
16 hours a week. And we've, we've played around with, used to, that was only afternoon hours. Now we do two days morning, two days afternoon. And last summer, for June, July, and August, we extended those hours to be open until 7:00 PM.
It hadn't gotten any better.
Actually, the numbers during June, July, and August decreased to the lowest amount we had.
Any further questions from council?
When's the actual lease expire?
June 30th of this year.
How much will rent go up if...
If we don't intend to purchase, the lease amount will remain the same per month for the next two years.
Additional two years.
If we up the lease, how do you go about getting out of the lease? What is the groove about how many days ahead or...
Well, everything in here pretty much says 90 days, either intent to renew or to purchase. So we would still have to give notice.
It's not the lease rate that's going up, what we're losing if we don't make a notification. It's basically a locked-in purchase price.
Right. It was only for the initial two years. The 169,900 was for the initial two-year term of the lease. After that, if council decides to buy it any time after that, we don't know what the purchase price will be. That's not in, in the contract.
Now, we're locked into the 169,900, right?
The property we have that the county owns in Ridgeway, right outside town limits, could it not be used to build, put a building on?
The property on 21, near the convenience center?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Wouldn't it be cheaper at $169,000?
To build a new building?
Yeah. You wouldn't have to have it that big because look at the thing they're using for the library now.
I don't know that we could do 169,000 to build something that would take us into the future.
Well, we need to maybe have something better for them because we got one-eighth of an acre with a building on it. And that's not really good.
I think as, as Mr. Robinson said, it's not ideal. But again, at the time, it was what was the best solution we could find.
Now, we're not talking just about present solution. We're talking about long-term solutions. So we'd have to extend out to do something else rather than go into maybe building it, just a small place, the same as you have. We need to kind of look at something else and trying to do something else.
Any further comments from council? Ms. Douglas? Mr. Paul, I'm sorry.
Yes. I want to make an appeal to the rest of council on this. I am going to vote no on purchasing this property, but not because I'm a pro, propose, propose to a permanent library in Ridgeway. To the contrary, hear me out. I think we can do better. There are a number of reasons I see not to purchase the current property, but to look for alternatives instead. First and foremost is the price. What the owner is asking for this property, we all know, is astonishing. The property isn't worth 25% of what we're being asked pay for it. And for that kind of money, we can do much better. Much better for the taxpayer, the town of Ridgeway, the retailers on Palmer Street, and the citizens who take use of the library. On top of the price, if we purchase the building as proposed, we won't be getting any credit for the 30,000 that we have already invested in renovations to it. And the current owner won't let us out of the lease early, even if we purchase the property before it's over. That's just robbery. Have you ever heard the quote, "A sucker is born every day"? If we purchase this property as proposed, we need to take a look in the mirror. Additionally, the location and space of this property are problematic. The property really should be used for the same purposes as everything else on Palmer Street, retail space. The property offers almost no parking, which is detrimental to the businesses on Palmer Street, taking up parking which could be used for paying customers for our Ridgeway merchants. The physical space is also undersized for what we need in the library, both currently and for the future. This area of the county, we all expect and are hoping, is going to be the first to experience considerable growth. We are putting a lot of dollars, resources, and infrastructure in this area of the county, demonstrating that our goal is to grow this area. If we are successful in this, and we should plan to be successful in this, we are going to very quickly need a larger space to hold a library. The current location just isn't going to do long term. Instead of us purchasing this property, I would much prefer for us to look at other options and build for the future rather than throwing money in a unsustainable location that should be used for retail space anyway. We know this location can attract retail. When the county leased the building, it was just about to be leased to a retail business. If we can find an alternative that will serve us better over the long term and isn't detrimental to the businesses on Ridgeway... on Ridgway's Main Street, even if it costs more, as long as it is, isn't extremely overpriced like this proposal for what it is, I am inclined to be in favor of it. I ask that we table this for 90 days and see if we can expand the hours to see if the numbers increase for this particular location.
Sorry, any further, any further from council? Are you making a motion, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Motion? That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Motion to table it for 90 days to see if we can expand the hours of the library to see if the numbers will increase from 10 or 12 people a day that's visiting the library, maybe open it 40 hours a week, to see if the numbers will increase and see if it's been official to Fairfield County to keep a library in Ridgway.
Motion's been made to extend the hours of the library for the period of 90 days for, for evaluation. Do I get a second?
You got a second, but you, you're making a suggestion to the library to?
Let's, let's, let's get through this formalities part first, then we'll get. Any discussion about the motion made?
Um, there is a discussion. Ms. Johnson, did you say that in 90 days, we'd be past the deadline date for the price of this building?
Yes, we extend it for 90 days because we need to send an intent to either renew or to purchase. And we need to send it before April 1st. Well, she needs to have it before April 1st, well, in advance of April 1st to meet our 90-day deadline. So we're either going to have to purchase, renew it, or terminate the contract.
Ms. Taylor?
And I will also add, I don't know that we, or you all as a body, can tell the library.
That's, that's what I was about to ask. Is, is, we can request, but I don't know if he, he's even got the finances to even do that, correct? So, you know, I think we'll be obligating another 30 or 50,000 if we tell him to go run the library for, say, an hour or so.
Is it possible that we can table this and speak with the library commissioner and the board and see if there's something we could work out as far as doing a survey or whatever, get with them? Because it is their decision to make. So it's possible just, you know, if it's only for a couple of weeks, but first, see what their ideas on what we can work out and then go from there.
Well, I think the motion's been made to already table it for an evaluation period. I don't think you specified.
He said 90 days.
He said 90 days. Okay.
Let me back it up to 60 days. That gives us enough time.
I'm not sure exactly how.
Go through this motion, right?
I'm not sure exactly.
Not for 60 days.
Hold on, guys. Hold on. I'm not sure exactly if you can put an evaluation, what type of timeframe moment. I guess, Mr. Robinson, can you advise or, or is this something?
It's not my decision to make. It will have to go to my library board to make that decision. So I defer to Mr. Doug on this question.
Mr. Chairman, Council, thank you. Part of the problem is that if we haven't made a decision by March the 30th, we're, we're out of a location. And so we, we do feel like we're under the gun to either make a decision to do it or not do it. We, like Mr. Robinson said, we've, we've moved that library six times. It cost us money to move. It cost you money for us to move. It surely would be nice to have a place permanently. The, the lot does go back to the other street, I believe. There is room for more parking if we chose to make a parking lot back there. If Ridgway expands like we hope it will, there is room to expand that building. And so part of, I think, whether, and I can't speak for the commission, other than to say I do chair it, but it, it, it answers a lot of the questions we've had over the last number of years about how to serve Ridgway and the fact that we have had a presence there for a long time. And, and the folks in Ridgway expect us to be there. And of course, for about a year, we weren't there because of the previous building and the problem we had with it. Your commission has worked very hard with Mr. Robinson and county administrators to find something and to move on to other things rather than dealing at every meeting with the Ridgway Branch. So I hope you will consider that, please.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
It's going to be 90 days anyway, so I'd like to retract my second and just let the, somebody just vote on the main, uh, resolution.
Any further from council? Mr. Morgan, can you clarify? Because we, I think several council members went left and right up here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, and also for members of the public, the motion that's on the floor was to, for a request of action as it relates to the purchase of the Ridgway Library Building wherein the county council would agree to contribute 50% of the funds as it relates to the purchase of the building. Mr. Pauli made a motion to table this particular action item for 90 days, at which point in time, Mr. Douglas initially seconded it, which would, which allowed for the discussion to come forward. I heard the, the chairman of the library board and Mr. Robinson talk about that. And as Mr. Taylor pointed out, the fact that some of the concerns that would come forward with that table would end up being county council attempting to try to direct another body on how to conduct their business. Based upon that, Mr. Douglas has withdrawn his second. So the motion's sitting on the floor without a second at this point in time. Assuming no second comes, then the main motion, i.e. the vote whether or not to approve the request for action, is before, is properly before council.
Well, Mr. Pauli's motion still stands. Do we get a second? If not, that motion dies. Any further? Any further? Well, because I know we still got to vote on this, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request as written.
Yeah. Motion's been made to approve and already seconded. All those in favor of, I forgot where we was at, the Ridgway Library. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Let's, let's do a high, a hand raise on those. All those in favor of the Ridgway purchase? That's three. All those opposed? Four. Motion fails. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, next we have Ms. Jennifer Glover-Hawkins with Cooperative Health here to give a presentation to council and ask, answer any questions they may have about the programs they offer. I think she's going to be looking primarily at telehealth, the telehealth program that they're, they're, they have available.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council and citizens of Fairfield County. I'm Lee Tan. I'm the Public Affairs Manager with Cooperative Health. We're the state's largest community health center system. We have 28 sites in four counties, including three here in Fairfield County. And what we're here to talk about tonight is our partnership with Fairfield County School District and the Medical University of South Carolina to bring telehealth to two fair, uh, schools in the Fairfield County School Districts, McCoy &amp; Liston School of Technology and also Fairfield Elementary. If you'll go to the next slide, please. We have a PowerPoint right here. We're going to show you a video illustrating exactly what is telehealth. Oh. Well, apparently the video didn't quite make it in there.
What happened?
It's not in there? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry. We'll just go with the presentation as intended. So school-based telehealth is when a child is sick, it's a two-way conversation over a video conference between a child, the school nurse, who's at the location of the school, and a provider of cooperative health or the Medical University of South Carolina. It provides high-quality health care for students in the school setting using telehealth technologies. And there's a stethoscope that's available utilized by a school nurse to check vital signs, and also special cameras are used for the provider that's off-site to examine the child. There's also a telemedicine cart that can be placed in the school nurse's facility. Say for a kid, for example, if the kid has a headache, instead of being sent home, the kid can get some aspirin and go back to class and doesn't miss class time. So the aims of the program are to, one, you know, if there's something that would eventually cause the ER visit, this untreated, to identify that through a telehealth consultation. It also reduces missed class time for students and also missed work time for parents. And it also eliminates transportation barriers for students who have those. Next slide. So what are some common childhood illnesses that can be seen through telehealth consultation? Includes sore health, sore throat, allergies, pink eye, and asthma. Recently, we had Kelly Garber from MUSC do a presentation before the Fairfield Elementary School faculty. And she noticed, pointed out that, you know, kids who have undiagnosed symptoms of asthma can actually receive primary care through the telehealth consultations if there's no other provider for them. And, you know, this really helps to reduce long-term hospitalizations that would go if the asthma was untreated. Next slide. So insurance does cover it, and you have to check with your private insurer if you're privately insured. And also, South Carolina Medicaid covers the telehealth business as well. So if you are privately insured, again, check with your provider, insurance provider. Next slide. So how does the program work? So first of all, a parent must sign a permission slip that'll be sent out to the parents within those two schools in the very near future. And then, once the parent signs off, if a child comes in and the nurse identifies the potential for the kid to be seen via telehealth consultation, the parent is in contact. And if the parent agrees, then the child receives a telehealth consultation. And then after the, after the examination, you know, whether the kid gets sent home or, you know, if it's well enough to go back to class, that's determined. And it's also, if they have a primary care provider, they're also looped in on this. And I should point out, it's not intended to replace a primary care doctor for your child. It's just another option for you as your child goes to school and, you know, also has the opportunity to stay in school if their symptoms don't present to be something that's serious enough to cause them to leave the classroom or the parent to leave work to come and get them. In addition, I have a four-year-old, and he hates going to the doctor. And I hate taking him to the doctor. It's a bad situation for everybody. So if you're a parent and the child is sick enough that they need to go to school, a prescription can be written ahead of you picking him up from school. So therefore, you cut out the doctor visit. You can get your child the medication he or she needs. And you can also just take him, him or her home so they can start to get better. Next slide.
Just keep going.
Yeah, keep going. So as I mentioned earlier, the student, students will receive a packet, a letter from Superintendent Dr. J.R. Green. And we'd like to thank him for his support of this initiative. And all you have to do is sign the packet, turn it back into the school. And if your child is deemed to be, could be beneficial from a telehealth visit, the school nurse will make that determination, make the proper calls. So at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Also, you're probably wondering at this time, who is Cooperative Health? I'm sure many of you are wondering that. We were formerly known as Eau Claire Cooperative. So it's not, it was not a false or, I guess, a negative venture. This was something, because we have expanded our, our workforce to 28 sites, and so we are now in your backyard. So we can now see anyone regardless of their inability to pay. So we have, we have three facilities here in Fairfield County, for those of you who are unaware, which is Winsborough Pediatrics, Ridgway Family Practice, and Dental, as well as Lake Monticello. And we also have a school initiative at McCoy &amp; Liston School of Technology.
Thank you. Ms. Glover, good to see you.
Always.
Just one quick question. Do you foresee counseling or mental health as telehealth in the future? Or is something like that going on now?
Well, we have, we have a behavioral health department. I'm glad you asked that question. So yes, that is something we definitely envision. And we, our behavioral health director, Dr. Rufus Woodard, is going to be one of the providers present if the determination's made, that behavioral health counseling is needed.
Okay. Counsel? Okay. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation. I'm very much aware of telehealth, excited about it being in our county. We are definitely moving forward. And I thank you so much for the presentation, for your being in Fairfield County. I'm also familiar with Eau Claire Cooperative Services, been familiar with them for years. So thank you.
I also want to say thank you to Mr. Moses Bell. He will be one of our poster childs for our Ridgway area, as well as Donald Prelo has agreed to help us service that area and expand services in Ridgway throughout that community. So thank you, Mr. Bell. Thank you, especially in the Jenkinsville area.
Thank you so much.
Exactly.
I might have missed this during the presentation, but this applied to all ages? What? Okay.
Elementary.
All kids within those two schools. That's McCoy &amp; Liston and also Fairfield Elementary.
Right. Now, doctors' dream vision is to get it throughout the school system. But right now, we're piloting actually in the elementary schools, just elementary, Fairfield Elementary and McCoy &amp; Liston School of Technology.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being here.
No problem. I should point out that 21 of the 46 counties in South Carolina have some force, form of school-based telehealth. So it's an idea that's catching on quick and finding success.
We can't move forward until we first get the consent form. So we're urging all parents to please embark upon this initiative. It can only help Fairfield County schools because we already know about the disparaging healthcare systems here. So we want to make this, again, as an alternative, not, you know, to take the place of the provider, but just as an alternative to healthcare.
And I might have missed this number, but I, you said it is, is piloting as of right now. What type of numbers we looking at? How many in-rulees would you have or?
Well, right now, we don't have any. It's, it's, it's just piloting. Right. Right. But we're hoping to kick it off very, very soon with a wide range of numbers.
Yeah. Within the next month, we plan to send the packet I mentioned out to the parents, including a letter from Dr. Green, encouraging parents to sign their children up for this.
You have 618, I think, in, in Fairfield Elementary, and you have 149 in McCoy &amp; Liston. So each child, at this point, will get a packet as well as the letter from the superintendent. We have also consumed that cost from a cooperative standpoint. So it is no cost to the county or to the school. So we printed everything, and we're also putting it in the packet. So there was no cost to associate with that.
Thank y'all.
And I'll just close by encouraging, thank you for your time and attention. And also, please encourage members of your committee, parents, to sign their kids up for this. This is a great opportunity.
Thank you. You guys got any brochures to put out in that we can leave outside also?
We'll get you some.
Okay. Thank you.
Left some packet for you, some information for you. So please take them.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Now, down to our clerk to council's report. Ms. Davis?
We will be having a work session concerning the changes being made to the animal ordinance on Wednesday, January 29th at 5:00 PM. There will be time during this work session for citizens to speak. And we anticipate the third and final reading of the new animal ordinance to be at our next regular meeting on February the 10th.
Thank you. Now, down to our second public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone want to speak?
We have five speakers. First, Mr. David Ferguson, speaking on the waste plant.
My name's David Ferguson, Sr. I'm a member of District 5. And hearing the news about the waste treatment plant being put in our neighborhood in the Ridgway area, a couple of things I wanted to bring to, to the attention of council and the attention of, of our citizens. 12 or 15 years ago, we had a suggestion from the COG that we, up until that point, the council had been zoning and rezoning ourselves in, in, in our specific districts. This was not working out real well because we found out some, some citizens had some rights that some other citizens did not. And that goes along with being elected, as y'all well know. So the COG, not alone just with Fairfield County, but with the whole state, they, they, they recognized that problem. And they come in and asked every- recognized that problem, and they come in and ask every county to hire a firm that was entailed in doing that kind of work to come into your, your district, your county, and to set up district-wide, as far as the zoning in each one of those districts. And it was very explicit about what those districts and what the zoning would be in them. And I'm just wondering, and I think I noted the answer, did we go back to the COG or to this agency in order to find out if what you guys have proposed is actually something you can do without going back? We're talking about 4 million gallons of wastewater a day in a, in a residential community. That's, that's what we're talking about. Not one, two, or three, but 4 million gallons a day. And in 25 years I've lived on Roamille Road, I have seen those, that Cedar Creek come out of its banks. Three years ago, for three days, we had to take an alternative route off Serp Mill Road because Serp Mill Road was flooded. Also, by the same token, you go down there in June and July, and there's not any water in that creek bed at all. None. No running water in that creek bed at all. And that being the case, how can we put that into that basin without it being leaching into the material? It's not, at that point, it won't be a moving material.
I'll, I'll, I'll extend one more minute.
For simple reason, if that, if that dose, if that is not flowing, it's settling and it's going into sediment. Therefore, it's going into the ground. Therefore, the, the wells and things that's in our area down there, and we have quite a few of them, I have one, the center of this plant will be 1.8 miles from my house. So, it's not, it's not just a neighborhood thing. I see some folks are not really concerned about it, but the fact of the matter is, if they lived in that area, they would be concerned about it. And I'm concerned about it, and I think you folks need to take another look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Gary Coats, speaking on wastewater treatment facility.
Can you spell his, can you spell his last name for me?
My last name is Coats, C-O-A-T-S. First name, Gary, two R's. I'm a resident of Richland County, just on the other side of Fairfield. I'm on Hennett Store Road, and I live pretty close to Cedar Creek. There are two creeks that go through my property. I've got 100 acres, a little more than that, actually. And the two creeks back up when Cedar Creek overflows. My water table is a little on the low side. I do have well water. Most of my neighbors do. There's no chance I'm going to get city water out where I'm at. I'm landlocked. I'm a half a mile back in the woods. My well is deep enough that my water will come from an aquifer that will be impacted by the wastewater that comes out of that plant. Now, I'm a U.S. Coast Guard adjunct captain, and I work on a lot of boats. I have never been on a boat that, that operated flawlessly ever. Something fails, a belt goes, a power steering goes out, fluids flow with gravity, and they find the quickest way out. So, at some point in time, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when and how often the plant is going to put stuff that doesn't belong in the water there. So, I'm asking that you not put that affluent into Cedar Creek. I'm going to follow up. I, I go past Cedar Creek every day, sometimes multiple times a day. I've seen it all the way up to the bridge in 2015 with the big flood, and I've seen it dry. And if you put that stuff in there, it's going to leach into well water for everybody that's down there in northern Richland County and in anywhere near Cedar Creek. So, I'm asking that you please consider some sort of plan that puts the water into the Broad River instead of Cedar Creek. I'm going to offer my time to help you find grant money, because I'm retired, I do have that time. I'll offer you 16 hours a week to help you find grant money to make it so that you can get the plant down closer to the river and put the affluent there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Rochelle G, speaking on wastewater treatment facility.
Mr. Chairman and Counsel, I'm Rochelle G., and I live on Serp Mill Road. When Thomas and Hutton presented here on January the 13th, they noted the location of a potential Serp Mill wastewater treatment plant, and they said that it was based on several points. They said, "There was a willing seller, it was easy access, and DHEC gave us a load estimate that worked." There was no noted consideration for the opinions and needs and wishes of the citizens of this camp, community. There are few people here tonight because the wastewater treatment plant was not on the agenda. But I want you to know that we have 1,550 signatures on a petition. 1,550 people want to be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on thoughts.
Jeff Schaefer, District 4. First, my hats off to Mr. Bell. Good questions tonight. You know, the only person that asks questions about how we're doing for a building that we're going to put a lot of money into, we asked about the leasing, what's going to happen, and you got half-baked answers. You know, if we're going to ask good questions, we should have good answers, and I didn't hear a good answer. I heard an answer. Where does that answer goes? Where, where are the questions? You know, we, a conversation is, I ask a question, you give me an answer. I ask another question, you give another answer. I didn't hear that going on today. I just got, you just got shut off. I like staying home on Monday nights, you know? This is becoming a pain. People here got a genuine problem with the wastewater. Doesn't affect me, affects 1,500 people. I was here the last week when we had the meeting. I said, "Wow! They didn't tell me that saving Fairfield came back to life! I haven't been in that parking lot that full. It was great." It's nice when the public comes out and tells you what's bothering them, and it's more important that when that happens, you folks need to do something in a positive way to answer. They need answers, whether it's going to be, yeah, we're going to have to put it there, or we're going to delay it, or we're going to do something else. But something should be expressed to the people coming up to talk about it. And lastly, I've only got a minute and a half. Give me an extra couple of minutes. I know the man was up here before. Broke his chops a number of times. Sorry, I couldn't help with that. We need to do a lot of things that need to be discussed, and they need to be answered. I was just talking to Will before I came in about the police department. Just throw this out. Why do we have two police departments in the county? Why do we have different fire departments? Why? Well, this is one community. We pay taxes, everyone pays taxes, and we have two different police forces, which means we have two different insurance companies, we have cars that are different, we have buildings that are different, same thing with the fire department. Why can't we get smart enough to say, "You know what we're going to do? We're all going to come together, and the one guy who may have lost his job will not lose his job, will be demoted a little bit. Give him the same amount of money. I don't want to hurt anybody, but let's be common sense." Can you imagine if all the police departments together? We could really cover the whole county. It's stupid. I'm sorry, I don't know, my vocabulary fails me when I hear things that just don't make sense. And I think if we started to analyze what we can do, fire departments need people. We're not pushing that. You've got kids in school. I don't know that we go, the fire department goes out and says, "Hey, we'd like to get some volunteers." And if the volunteering is a problem, I understand that we're going to change the value of what we pay volunteers. I hope that's not so, and if it is, we should be increasing it. My time is running out. I'll just leave with saying, "Thank you. Sorry I bothered you tonight."
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on updates, please.
Randy Bright, Ridgway, Fairfield County, District 1. I agree with Jeff. Consolidation with the Ridgway Police Department was a good step, but I agree with, with Jeff that small communities need the synergy of banding together and not being territorial about their procedures, but being smart. But my main speech tonight is try to evoke some updates from you guys. And the first one is, how are we coming on the procurement manual rewrite? And it is a particular concern because right now, we have a procurement manual, the way it's worded, and we've discussed all this. You can't hold anybody accountable for anything, generally or specifically. When I say generally, because the manual clearly states it's a guide. It also, specifically, it, it talks about a spending limit that's open-ended. We don't know if it's a project per project or if it's per one-time purchase. It would take about 15 minutes at the most to rewrite just a few sentences to hold somebody, to hold anybody accountable. I, I feel sorry for the government employees to have a procurement manual that they really don't have any boundaries on. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to you guys, and it's not fair to the public to have a procurement manual with no boundaries. Wouldn't take but a few minutes to rewrite it. If you need assistance, I'd be more than glad to help with that aspect. And I realize you've had a lot going on. However, to continue to run with a procurement manual that had caused so much chaos in the past, I would, I would have, to be honest with you, I've praised you guys for a lot of things you've done, this one has slipped through the cracks. So, please, let's not continue on with a procurement manual that can't hold anybody accountable. Also, where do we stand on the broadband grant? Everybody up here stated we need it. We all know we need it in our rural county, and not just in the far hinterlands. It's, I've said before, I could walk to downtown Ridgway, we, we don't have high-speed internet. Additionally, promet a promise. When is that promise going to, of accountability for them? When are they going to make that presentation to see how they're doing? And I'm not against that program, I've always been for it, but it's a program that needs accountability, and we'd like to hear that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment two.
Thank you. Now, down to county council time. Any council member like to be recognized? Ms. Douglas.
I don't, I don't think that Cedar Creek, the people that live on Cedar Creek realize how much more of a benefit you'd have with a sewer plant putting clear water in Cedar Creek. I don't think you realize either that you've got raw sewage right now being dumped in Cedar Creek. It's coming from Ridgway. And the county has agreed to clean up the sewage plant at Ridgway if we're able to put the sewage plant to dump into Cedar Creek.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Any other council member like, Mr. Bell?
Yes. First thing, Mr. Taylor, are you still looking for sites for the, can you talk about that a second?
Yes, we are still actively looking for additional sites that may work better for the wastewater treatment facility. We're also looking at another site that we have, didn't previously fully vet or fully consider, and that's a piece we already own in the Commerce Center, but we have talked with our engineering firm to, to, again, look at that piece, vet it, give us the pros and cons of being able to use a piece of property that we already own.
Where is it going to end up flowing to?
Unfortunately, I wish we had a lot of options, but we have very few options, and regardless of where we actually cite the plant, it will go back to Cedar Creek. That's, that's one of the few options we have, unless we took it to the Broad, which, again, we know would be the best option, but it's by far the most expensive option.
Okay. When will you have any, when do you think you might have, you vetted that, the one we're talking about now, Ron Boemack?
Push our engineers, and hopefully, we'll have an answer by mid to end of February. I hope end of February, and we will push them, but they're giving us some pushback, saying it takes time to do these things.
Okay. Another thing is, as we talk about the situation on Cedar Creek, the wastewater treatment plant, some months ago, I, I talked in here about the incinerator at, over there on Airport Road. And when we voted for it, if everybody remember, I voted against rezoning that property. But one of the things now is, we look, because we can't get any other property, we looking at putting the incinerator dead in that residential community. So, again, it's very important that we look out for the citizens of this county. We just cannot be placing environmental hazard in their, in their communities. I, I am very disappointed in that situ, in that situation. I mean, I am very, very disappointed that, that we are doing that in, in that neighborhood. With, with the Cedar Creek situation, people have a lot of resources, get a lot of attention, but that community over there don't have the resources that affluent communities have. But I'll tell you what, it is just as wrong. It, it is just as wrong. And, and I would appreciate that, that we start doing something and looking out for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I've listened to a lot of things tonight and over the past couple of years, and I keep hearing about economic development and the comprehensive plan that Fairfield County has. I've heard so many people come up and say, "The black community in Western Fairfield," or "The African-American community in Western Fairfield," and, but I haven't heard them come up and say, include them in economic development as far as the water, as far as growth in that area. And I do know that that area is a part of the comprehensive plan. When I heard them talking about telehealth, that's the future. It's happening now. The wastewater treatment plant, we look at other options, and we'll continue to look at other options, but that's the future. That's life. That's how things move, and no, we don't deliberately try to put anything where it's going to harm anybody. But I've heard so many times, Western Fairfield has been left out. No, it hasn't. When the councilman and the senator and the House representative publicly deceive the people and cover the county, uncover conspiracy or corruption in an area to cut off a community that has been cut off for I don't know how long, not because they're black, but because the representative did not make every effort to work with everybody they can to make the community better. It's not about building a self, it's not about a certain area. Try to annexate, do an annexation in a small part of Western Fairfield. Why? You don't have anything to offer, any benefits, but you have control, and if you can control the people, you can control their money. But you have nothing to offer them. But why, my neighbor says about bringing everybody together. I didn't see when I was sworn in where it says, "I'm only supposed to represent, work for the black people." I didn't see that in there. I did not see that I'm only supposed to work for the white people. I did not see that. I didn't see it for Baptist, Republican, or Democrat. I thought it said I was sworn in for Fairfield County. And if I'm sworn in for Fairfield County, that means that whatever's going on to help improve a better Fairfield County, that should be my focus, that should be my objective, that should be my purpose. I'm not going to agree with everything everybody says, and we're not going to ever agree all the time. But I'm saying tonight, it is a disgrace when people that are in position, that can help a community, use them. They are taxpayers in Western Fairfield County? Yeah, they pay taxes. They paying for water. It's bad, but they paying for it. And they also vote. But if I, if you can get the vote from the people, then the people need to get what they're supposed to have and the reasons that they're voting for you. So, I'm asking the council, I'm asking the senator, I'm asking the House of Representatives to do everything they can to ensure that Western Fairfield is open to to do everything they can to ensure that Western Fairfield is open to every opportunity that comes in Fairfield County, regardless of what area it's in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member like to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trapp.
To the citizens of Cedar Creek, don't get your, don't get your hopes too high. We went through this process with, with Airport Road, supposedly hunting for a different property. It's not gonna happen. So I'm letting you know, as a member of council, I've never seen it happen, never since I've been up here. There's just a stall tactic, no one is looking for other property, they gonna tell you that until you try to wait you out, but it's not gonna happen. And I sympathize with you, 'cause it's wrong to even be put there, just like it's wrong to be put the incinerator Airport Road, and when the council said we was looking at other alternatives, I know that was a bunch of crap, and it's a bunch of crap for y'all to, and I apologize for the council.
Well, I know for a fact you've had a bunch of crap yourself, because I know for a fact that we have looked at other places.
Find a piece of property and let's put it there, let's see. It's not gonna happen.
Mr. Taylor, um, I, I think you said it before, but can you, can you reiterate to the citizens of Center Creek, um, on record, that you're doing everything in your power to look for another location?
We are, we're on a regular basis, meeting with one other landowner. We have identified a piece that is in the industrial part of the Commerce Center, behind Mr. Davenport's office currently. We're having the engineers look at that. Again, we are looking at other pieces of property, uh, we're weighing the pros and cons of those other pieces of property. We will bring in other options back to council. Some of those options will no doubtily have issues associated with them, because we're gonna have to get easements and/or purchase other properties. Uh, even if we use the piece of property we own, we're gonna have to use and/or purchase other pieces of property to get a line to Cedar Creek, 'cause again, Cedar Creek is the option that DHEC has given us, that we can afford. Uh, some of the other properties that we're looking at, we would have to buy a much, much larger piece of property, and the cost again will be much higher. But again, that'll be a council decision, whether you all wish to spend the money on some of these other alternatives, or do what it takes to make these other alternatives work.
Mr. Taylor, um, I said this at the last council meeting, and I'm gonna say it again, I, I think we owe it to, to everyone of the Center Creek community and surrounding areas to, to do what we can to, to look for another location. And as the representative for District Five, I would like for you to provide documentation, even if the engineers deem that the property is not gonna work, provide counsel on a regular basis, um, that you are doing the research to look for other pieces of property, even if it's not suitable for Fairfield County or, or the Center Creek for the wastewater plant. So, so we can let the citizens know that we are doing everything we can to, uh, find another location. Is, is that possible for you to provide?
I would be glad to provide that information. Again, if we're in the middle of negotiations with a, a specific landowner, that's, I, I, I'll be glad to provide that to you all, but that's difficult to be letting the public get in the middle of that, 'cause, you know, that could complicate things tremendously, uh, and again, drive costs up. But I'll be glad to provide all the engineering, I think that, that's not a problem at all. I, I'll just say, go ahead.
And I appreciate everyone from Center Creek being here, especially Mr. Ferguson, who, who, um, was on council for a long time and has a lot, a lot of knowledge about what went on on council. I think what Mr. Ferguson brought up needs to be researched, or whether or not the property is zoned for a wastewater treatment plant, and, and research, um, material from back then, the Sea of the COG, you know, deemed it, um, suitable for wastewater treatment plant. And, and the other thing I, I have to say, um, is on the roads in Fairfield County, I'm pretty sure that every council member probably received phone calls about how bad the roads are in Fairfield County. I receive them on a daily basis, Highway 321, Highway 269, Devil's Racetrack Road, and I would like to see a presentation done either by DOT or either by the Senator Mike Fannin on the progress of the roads in Fairfield County.
We'd be glad to, again, the majority are gonna be DOT. Ms. Johnson, I think, had previously talked about, there's a new site, when we went and talked with Mr. Johnson, Jamie Johnson, with DOT, that you can look up and see when roads are scheduled essentially to be repaid and such. But anyway, we'll make that information available, and we will, uh, ask for them to come in and give a presentation on the roads.
Thank you.
I'll just say that I am privy to the negotiations with the other land. As a matter of fact, after the last meeting we had, Mr. Taylor had a meeting with the prospective landowner, reference to the wastewater treatment facility, that next day, and due to the heightened alarm of what's going on, the publicity, the land on, the landowner has pretty much went up five times as much as, uh,
That happens.
What we was looking at, so that little 300,000, it's not gonna happen. I can just say that, and I'm not gonna get into any further details, but the, I know for a fact that the price of the land is going up.
Okay, um, yes, I will.
It's by far more than the 300,000.
I mean, it, it is, but it, it ain't going up, 'cause the first, the original price I thought was around 10,000, right?
He finally gave us a price, we, we had been waiting on a price for a long time, but it's, it's not, we're trying to get it down from that price, but it has not gotten down from that price yet.
The day after the meeting, it went up five times what we thought.
I would like to say to the citizens and the families in Cedar Creek, I do not take this lightly at all, it may seem that way, I take, whatever I do, I take it very serious, and I can understand your concerns. There is no way, even when we get, if we got to the last part of it, that if there's some reason that it would be harmful in any manner, if it was not done in the right way, if it did not meet all regulations, there is no way at that point I would say yes, so I wanna let you know that. This is a process that we're going through. I think when we did the presentation last week, we were only like, I'd say, not even quite halfway yet. It's a process that we go through with all projects, before we get to the final part, the final decision of, um, what's going to happen. But during that process, I have to give it to this team, we tried to keep everybody abreast of what's going on, try to be as open as possible about it, and that's what I expect of us to do, we're supposed to do that. But there is no way, in, in the circumstances, that if there, I felt that it was, um, harmful or whatever, that I would say yes to it. I'm gonna always hold you, your interest at heart. So it's only a process that we're going through right now, we have, we are nowhere near the end part, but I just wanted to let you know that. As well as with the incinerator, I understand all of that, but that, you know, I just wanna make that clear.
Mr. Douglas.
Ms. Davis, if you need to, um, know how to spell that word, I'm sure you don't use it, just give me a call and I'll tell you how to spell it.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Taylor, I forgot one thing. A gentleman brought up grants, maybe to send it to the Broad River. Are we researching any possible grants that would be able to, um, move it to the Broad River?
Yes, we have looked at grants, we've gone to Washington, we brought it up when we were in Washington, uh, with Congressman Norman specifically. We would love, again, to find money to do this, and there is a large infrastructure bill that will be coming out of Washington, we specifically ask him when that will occur.
1.7 trillion.
Right. Uh, again, with all of the issues in Washington, that's probably gonna be a long time in coming. So anyway, those are things we've looked at, the state, even to do what we're doing, uh, we're getting a huge infusion of grant money from the state, uh, and as much we would love for the state to cover the whole 80 million dollars, getting them to do 30 million is, is a stretch almost.
COG is really working along with us on this thing.
COG is working with us, Department of Commerce is working with us, uh, to make it viable at all.
All right, if council has anything further, um, next is executive session, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Morgan, because there is an item we need to discuss that just came up, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to request an executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated 30-4-70 subsection A2, in order to receive legal advice as it relates to a pending, uh, claim on behalf of the county as it relates to an economic development matter.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to? It's been moved and processed, any of those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're in our executive session.